We're gonna, we're gonna start in just a minute. If anybody wants a refreshment or hasn't gotten a handout, this would be a great time to do that.
Good evening, everyone. Some people said we were gonna have 20, some people said we were gonna have eight. We got more than both combined, I think. So glad to have so many here and quite a few streaming as well. My name is Father Dan. As many of you know, perhaps all of you know, been pastor here since August 16th. There's a couple of other priests that are working here and in family 36. Father Jim's in the back joining us today. Everybody wave to Father Jim. Dressing like a Franciscan today, he's got the brown hood on. And Father Paul could not be joining us today, but has, has been here especially focused on the Newman Center. So you get the Blessed Trinity here, the three of us. It is an honor for me to be here. There's a little bit of information on the front of the handout. Hopefully, did everybody get one of those handouts as they came in? There's a whole bunch of different information in there. We're gonna be covering some of that today. A little bit about, about me in the beginning there. A little typo in my name, you'll figure it out. But as we gather here today, and before I turn things over, let's, let's start with prayer. Begin in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you've given from the very dawn of creation and the pouring out of the waters. You've always had in mind the good of all, and we ask you to help us be mindful of the, the good of all in need of help. You sent your Son to walk among us, to accompany us, mindful always of everyone's need, especially those that most needed help, calling us to care for those who were infirm or on the edges. And you sent the Holy Spirit to, to set our lives on fire, to fill us with passion, to reach out and do the work of God, and to take on this ministry. We thank you for all of these things, and we ask for your blessing through Christ our Lord. Amen. I think I'm turning things over to Deacon Paul now.
So welcome, our Deacon Mike.
It's alright, it's alright, call me Deacon Paul.
Deacon Mike, though. I thought I'd do is take a moment to, um, let's just reflect for a minute. Everyone's kinda had their day and it's been a busy day. Let's take a minute because then try to gather our thoughts and gather our hearts together. And I'd like to read a reading from Matthew that I think is appropriate. So let's just take a minute for a second and just try to drill down into what we're talking about. When the Son of Man comes in his glory, and all the angels with him, he will sit on his glorious throne. All the nations will be gathered before him, and he will separate the people one from another, as a shepherd separates the sheep from the goats. He will put the sheep on his right and the goats on his left. Then the King will say to those on his right, "Come, you are blessed by, by my Father. Take your inheritance. The kingdom prepared for you since the creation of the world is yours. For I was hungry, and you gave me something to eat. I was thirsty, and you gave me something to drink. I was a stranger, and you invited me in. I needed clothes, and you clothed me. I was sick, and you looked after me. I was in prison, and you came to visit me." Then the righteous will answer him, "Lord, when did we see you hungry? Feed you, and feed you, or thirsty, and give you something to drink? When did we see you, see you a stranger and invite you in, or needed clothes and clothe you? When did we see you sick or in or in prison and go visit you?" The King will reply, "Truly I tell you, whatever you did for the, one of the least of these brothers and sisters of mine, you did for me." We stand here in a community of people who have generously taken their time, their treasure, to do exactly what this reading tells us that we need to do. As we continue to reflect what's, what we're gonna talk about tonight, keep this passage in mind, because we should all be congratulated for the work that's being, that's been going on in this Newman, Newman Center community. We work hard, and part of this is to give thanks to everybody. Amen.
Hi, everyone. I'm Carrie Frank. I'm a member of the Ministry Planning Council here at the Newman Center. And I've also been a volunteer at the Diocese Central Office in various capacities over the years. And we've all heard about the diocese's road to renewal, that placed parishes into families, and the more recent announcement of many parish closures. And while not as dramatic as what many in our Catholic family, our Catholic dioceses really, are experiencing, we are not unaffected. There are some changes going on here to the way the Newman Center is, is organized and functioned, and so I have the job of trying to explain that in as simple a way as possible for everyone. So, most of us, we come to Mass on Sunday, and we don't really think about the structure and what's happening, probably didn't really even know how the Newman Center was structured from a business point of view. More recently, with the diocese's bankruptcy, many people had concerns about, you know, monies that might be donated being taken by the diocese and not wanting necessarily to fund things that way. And so, in the interest of transparency, hopefully to bring some reassurance, I want to take a few minutes to explain a bit about the Newman's structure and what's changing. So, gonna keep it kinda high level. The road to renewal organized all the parishes and the dioceses into 36 families. A major driver, driving factor behind that is the projected number of priests that will be in our dioceses by 2030. So, there needed to be change, and change, you know, began, met a couple years ago, and now has really brought us to the point where churches and parishes are closing. Back in 2022, around 2022, UB Newman Center was placed into the Campus Ministry Family, along with St. Joe's University Parish and Buffalo State Newman Center. And that was really accomplished through the advocacy of Father Pat and Father Jack, and working with the bishop to bring a strong presence about campus ministry into the diocese as a whole. Our family is, as Father Dan said earlier, has a single pastor, and we're delighted that you're here. Thank you. And two parochial vicars, Father Paul Syle, and who, who has been here with us at the Newman Center for the past year and a half or so, and Father Jim, who spends most of his time at St. Joe's, but we have been fortunate to see him come through and do some masses with us here in, in our community. But the projection is by 2030, we will have one priest to serve that whole family. So, obviously different, you know, in the future, it probably will be sooner than 2030, and we are fortunate as a diocese to have many retired priests, like we have Father Roy here often, who helps to sustain the ministries and the mass schedules. And so, you know, it won't be perhaps as abrupt as one priest, but nonetheless, that is the outlook for us as a family. So, let me get into a little bit more about structure. Under the church structure, we are, and we have always been, what is known and designated as a Newman Center. That is actually a term that exists in canon law. It is an organizational body, just like parishes are within the church. But it has actually been defined as a ministry supporting a public university with an intentional community dedicated to this mission. So, different than parishes, which all have geographic boundaries, I think the whole world is separated into geographic boundaries by the Catholic Church, and defines dioceses, and it defines parishes, but there are very few exceptions, and we are one of them as a Newman Center. So, we're an intentional community dedicated to the mission, meaning we don't come from just one neighborhood, one geography, but really are brought together by our dedication to the mission of the Newman Center. I want to also clarify that despite the description of UB Newman Center in the diocese media release, we are not a secondary worship site. There are many places turning into secondary worship sites, but that is not us. The diocese did acknowledge to us that that was done for simplicity within a very, very large announcement, but we are and will remain a Newman Center. So, that's part one. Part two is that under civil law, under the New York State corporate law, the Newman Center previously was always a department of the diocese of Buffalo. So, we were just another activity within the larger diocese corporate entity. The change, the biggest change that we're experiencing is that effective September 1st, 2024, we now operate under the St. Joseph University Parish Corporation. So, we are now a department, if you want to call it that. We are a section, but we are operating under St. Joe's. Now, you know, no one knows exactly what that means, but I will say, first of all, the, the people at St. Joe's have been more than welcoming and accommodating in terms of, of how we make this all come together. And I will also comment that, you know, it's a little better to be part of a strong, what was a strong parish, now is strong family entity than a bankrupt diocese department. So, you know, everyone will make their own opinions, but I, I think it's really a good thing for us. So, let me just talk about a couple of, of points that people have asked about, that wanna understand, have heard about this relationship and wanna understand a little more. So, in this arrangement, our records and revenues and expenses will be segregated. And we will maintain our own bank accounts, and we are getting the assistance of the business office at St. Joe's to have our own financial statements. And Paulette will be here in a few minutes to talk more about that. All of our revenues will be used to fund our ministries. We will continue to maintain our own finance council. Decisions about our ministries will be made by our community in consultation with our pastor father, Dan. We continue to have our Ministry Planning Council. And, and this is perhaps not the best part of the arrangement, but right now is where we stand, is that our building remains a property of the diocese. They cannot address anything about our building while they're in the midst of their Chapter 11 bankruptcy. But, on a positive side, due to our serving a important and highly active ministry for the diocese, it was not among the properties listed for sale. And I think the wisdom of the folks that have talked about it here in the Newman Center is, we're best off to be quiet about it right now. We're in a good place. Decisions were made that were in our favor. And, you know, I, I think over time, hopefully, we can sort through the building part as well. So, we have the responsibility, though, as a campus ministry family, to be the presence of campus ministry for the diocese as a whole. Because we have that responsibility, we also have a very unique designation where the revenues that we collect through our offatory are not part of the diocesan assessment. We do not pay assessment, like most of the other parishes and the dioceses, because we have the responsibility of this ministry. We are unique. In September of 2025, as part of the ongoing assessment of families, we will also be assessed to determine our progress in coming together as a family throughout, with the three entities that are within the campus ministry family, and with our ability to carry out the diocesan campus ministry function. So, we are, you know, still in the oversight of the diocese with this important ministry, but we also get some benefits because, because of that. And so, I'll just conclude by saying, you know, in some ways, this, this community has been living the future for some time. With so few priests, lay leadership is gonna be needed more than ever to continue the ministries, the mission, and continue our community. And at Newman, we had Father Pat, who interacted with the dioceses on our behalf, and we really didn't have a lot of councils or committees during his tenure. But, since he left, it's been great to see the community come together, our leaders step forward to carry on and enhance our ministry. And to that end, I am going to turn things over to Mike Biato to talk a little bit about some of the great things happening here at Newman.
Thank you, Carrie. I am gonna talk about the ministry here at the UB Newman Center. And gatherings like this one remind me of the strength of the community and the impact that we can have together. We often say here, "All are welcome." And tonight, I'm excited to share how this welcoming community is growing, thriving, and making a difference. And I'll start with our 48th Annual Chicken Barbecue, a highlight of the year. We cooked and sold more than 1,200 chicken dinners, chickens marinated in our secret sauce. Right, Anne McGurk, where's Anne? There she is, yes. Couldn't do it without Anne. But the barbecue is about more than just food. The event brought together 185 dedicated volunteers and raised an incredible $52,000 to support our ministries. But it's more than just a fundraiser. Our annual barbecue is a celebration of community, generosity, and faith in action. Now, beyond the fun, our pastoral life is vibrant and growing. We currently have four weekend masses, plus live streaming of the 9:15 Sunday morning Mass, and we're live streaming this right now. In the past year, we've welcomed 31 new parishioners, and we've celebrated milestones in our faith, baptizing 100 children, guiding 190 people through faith formation, and preparing dozens for their first communion and confirmation. These sacraments are more than just rituals. They're moments when individuals and families experience Christ's love and mercy. Thank you, Josh. He does everything here. Our ministry also extends to those in need. Every month, we deliver 150 hot meals to the homeless in downtown Buffalo. And our Food for Thought program supports more than 70 food insecure students at UB. These efforts offer dignity and hope. And it's not just about feeding the hungry, it's about the people. This year, Eileen, where's Eileen? Eileen received the St. Joseph Lay Worker Award for her leadership in serving the food insecure. She's an inspiration to us all and to the power of love. Now, education and dialogue are also important here at the Newman Center. This past summer's Bridge Lecture Series drew hundreds of curious minds together to explore topics as varied as artificial intelligence and shoulder replacement surgery. Thanks, Ed and Ronnie. Where are the Cavens? Over there. And more recently, we welcomed Professor Massimo Fajoli from Villanova University to discuss Pope Francis's vision of synodality, an event that deepened our appreciation for dialogue and learning. Now, what makes the human, UB Newman Center unique isn't just the activities and the programs. As you know, it's the people. Our welcoming and inclusive approach embraces everyone. Those feeling lost, those questioning, and those who have struggled with their faith. With compassion, respect, and love guiding all we do, we're here to support and welcome you just as you are. But none of this happens without you. We need your hands, your hearts, and your support to keep the ministry thriving. Whether it's volunteering for events, attending Mass, donating your time, talents, and financial support, or simply spreading the word about our work, every contribution matters and is appreciated. Thank you. Josh is gonna talk about campus ministry.
Thank you, Mike. I'm here tonight representing our campus ministry team here at the UB Newman Center. Myself, Francesca Harvey, two interns, Jewel and Vicky, and then also our liturgical team. Father Paul, Father Dan, Father Jim, and Deacon Mike. Together, all of us minister to the students just across the street at the university at Buffalo. Allow me to take you through a typical week of what that ministry looks like, so you can understand what it really means for a Newman Center that has as its mission care for a public university to actually care for the students at that university. Every Sunday night during the semester, whether it's the fall or the spring semester, we send out a bus around 6:05 to go around the entirety of the campus and pick up students at various apartments and also dormitories. We bring them here for a 6:30 student Mass. They don't wake up that early, at 9:15 or 10:45, so we have something in the evening for them. After that Mass, we have home baked goods available for however many students show up. This semester, we've had over 100 people at some of our student masses, and at times, we've had over 60 students there as well. So, 60 students coming here for Mass. I would challenge you to go to any public university in the US right now and find close to 100 students showing up for Mass on a Sunday night. Then we come to Wednesday nights. If you've somehow missed out what we do on Wednesday nights, we have a dinner for students. At Wednesday night dinners this year, we've been serving on average 175 students every week. We give them a hot meal, after sending out a van to pick them up on campus, of course. And during that meal, we have gift card giveaways for everything from Aldi's, so they can go shopping for a week, to something a little bit more fun, whether it's the AMC, so they can go see a movie, or Target, because, well, college students love Target. Also, on Wednesday nights, after the meal, our campus ministry team will remain afterwards with students to talk to them, whether it's about their personal lives, whether it's about questions they have about their Catholic faiths, whether it's about more pressing issues. The week of the election and the week after, there are some very long nights for me. We're present for our students. We give them the time that we have as campus ministers to listen to them, to hear them, and to allow them to have a positive environment to grow and mature within. Thursday nights, we have what we call Newman Nights. Again, we send out a van, there's a bit of a pattern here, pick up students on campus, bring them back here to the Newman Center. At the beginning of Newman Nights, we'll talk to them a bit about a Catholic saint. Then we'll have a discussion. We've talked about scripture, we've talked about theology, we've talked about how they can vote. This Thursday, we'll actually have a very special talk from Jackie Walker, who I think is here tonight, about the importance of being informed in an age of misinformation, disinformation, and a changing media landscape. We provide them various ways, not just to educate themselves, but also to discuss with each other, to participate in that quintessential university activity that Cardinal John Henry Newman praised so much about the university experience. We also, of course, feed them, another very important part of our ministry. Outside of our weekly activities, we provide semesterly retreats. We just had one this Saturday where we had around 20 students for an entire day here at the Newman Center, culminating in confessions and Mass on a Saturday night. We'll go on another retreat in the spring semester to the Abbey of the Genesee. We do collaborative service work with both St. Joseph's University and the Buffalo State Newman Center. Tomorrow night, Francesca will be taking some students to the Little Portion Friary in downtown Buffalo. Beyond that, we also will do wider collaborative work with campus ministries across the entire diocese, whether it's working together to plan out immersion trips, whether it's figuring out how to bring together student leaders in a conference. This is the work of campus ministry, and this is the work that you as a Newman Center have been supporting. have been supporting and have been enabling for years now. This is the work that the entire campus ministry team is incredibly grateful for. So, thank you for your support. Of the efforts of us as a campus ministry team, but more importantly, of the single most important reason for the existence of this Newman Center are UB students. They are very, very grateful for everything you do to them, and without you, we would not be able to care for them in the way that we do. Thank you. I'd like to invite Paulette up now to talk a little bit about our finances.
Good evening. I'm Paulette Crook, and I'm here on behalf of the Finance Council, many of whose members are here this evening. I'm going to speak about four things. We started the year with a fresh start, our 24-25 budget, what do we do with the money, and how can you help? So let's start with the fresh start. I want to start with thank you to everyone who contributed to close the gap. With just a small bit of forgiveness on the behalf of the diocese, we were able to overcome what in February was a $72,000 deficit to end the year even. We started this new fiscal year with no debt hanging over our head. Thank you very much to all of you. This is important because, as Carrie said, we are no longer a department of the diocese. Now we have to stand on our own as a member of the campus ministry family. So thank you for the fresh start. The 24-25 budget. I'm going to talk about things at a high level. I'm sure many of you will have questions, and I'll answer them at the end, but I didn't want to go through a balance sheet because you'll all fall asleep. The Finance Council developed a balanced budget for this year, first time in a while. It is dependent on weekly contributions averaging $10,500 per week and continued strong fundraising from events like the barbecue and the split club. If you take out your handout and you look at this blue bar chart right here, you can see that our contributions have been averaging below that line. That line is the target upon which we built the budget, and it's what we need in order to pay all of our bills and do all the ministry work that Josh spoke about. We've been averaging about $8,800 a week, down from our high of about $9,800 back in June and July. So, if... we need your help. If 300 families contribute additional $6 a week, we'll hit that target, we'll be able to pay our bills, we'll be able to keep the doors open, the lights on, and to continue the important ministry that Josh was talking about. So what do we do with the money? I'm going to repeat some of the things Carrie said because it's important, and you need to know it from the perspective of the financial reporting also. What do we do? We retain our own list of community members. We can't use the word parish; we're not a parish; we're an intentional community, but we are members of the Newman community. We retain our own sacramental records. We retain our own bank accounts. We have our own financial statements, and we have our own obligation to cover our debts. Carrie also mentioned we are not subject to any diocesan assessment. All parishes are assessed a percentage of their collection to support the work of the diocese. The Newman Center is supporting the work of the diocese by fulfilling the role of campus All the funds that you contribute through weekly collections, through fundraisers, through split club, special sponsorships, remain here to pay our bills and our support. Zero really means zero. I've heard it directly from the CFO of the diocese. I understand that, which is why we maintain our own bank accounts and our own financial statements so that we're not commingled with St. Joe's, who does receive a diocese because they are a traditional... an assessment, because they are a traditional parish. I honestly, completely believe that zero means zero. As we mentioned back in the spring, when we sent out our first report to the community, about 33% of our expenses go toward campus ministry. Another 25% of our expenses go towards liturgy, spiritual events, and the remainder goes towards the building, keeping things running. There's a small balance sheet in here, and you can see that of our $659,000 in expenses, almost $450,000 of it is personnel. It's not a lot of wiggle room. We're very frugal in accomplishing the things that Josh talked about. So given all of that, last thing, how can you help? Please either begin or increase your weekly contributions by at least $6 per week. Enroll in automatic online giving. There's a handout in here that shows you, and Joe LaJaccano is going to talk about it in detail. Regular online giving is helpful to us so that we can guarantee a stream of income. While we may travel and be other places on weekends, the lights still have to go on, the Wednesday night dinners still have to happen, and online giving helps us make that Also, consider sponsoring one of our key ministries, a Wednesday night dinner. You can do this on your own, or you can join with your friends. We're hoping to find a number of people to donate $2,000 per Wednesday night dinner to help us defray the costs of the dinner. We do 21 dinners a year. We're looking for five families or groups of families to help us make that happen. So if you have it in your heart and your pocketbook, please consider that. So I've told you the four things. Thank you, you helped us get off to a great start. We have a balanced budget for this year. Our expenses and revenue offset each other. We are in control of our own finances, and we've shared a couple of ways that you can help. And we're happy to answer any questions you have in more detail about this when we get to our question and answer period. And now I'm going to turn it over to Joe LaJaccano to talk more about online giving.
Thanks, Paulette. You know, the one thing that I'm sure all of you are sitting there listening, we're listening too. You know, we're listening to each other; we're listening to all of you. And the one thing I come away with, and I hope you do too, is that there's an immense amount of work being done here. There's a lot of dedicated people here, including all of you, many of you, who have done so much for the Newman Center. And I think that gives us a little pride. It gives us a little feeling that maybe there's a little light at the end of the tunnel, and hopefully, all of this information that's been shared with you can give you a sense that not only can we survive, but we can thrive. But as you know, it takes a village, and that means all of us. So I am going to talk a little bit about the online system. I'm sure most of you are familiar with online processes or what have you, doing things online yourself. But the main thing, first of all, I'd just like to say is, do whatever's comfortable for you. If that means the weekly basket, that's fine too. If it means mailing a check or whatever, that's fine too. Whatever you're comfortable with, but please participate. If you feel like we do, this sense of loyalty and commitment to the Newman Center and all of what we're trying to do here, and I know many of you do, if you're not doing something now, please consider doing so, and if you are, please consider doing a little bit more, if you can. I know that there are some folks who have a reservation about online giving. I've heard this from a couple of people because they say the basket goes around, and if they don't put something in, they feel like somebody's going to look at them and think that they're not doing enough. Rest assured, that's not the case. There are many of us doing online giving, so you don't have to worry about that. And Father knows that many of us are giving online. He's not looking at whether your hand is going in the basket or not. The other thing about online giving that's important, as many of you know, is that, you know, if you go on vacation, or if you're feeling ill and you can't make it to mass or whatever, you know, we still have the lights on, we still have to pay the salaries and all of that. I'm sure you know about that story, right? So when you do the online giving, it's continuous, and it happens whether you're able to make it to mass or whether you're out of town or whatever or not. And that's an important aspect of meeting these goals that we just talked about. The thing about it is, you know, it's really an easy process. And if you have the handout there, it really talks about it. It's basically, you just go to that upper right-hand corner, you click Donate, and then you have to create a profile if you haven't done that yet. So you enter your email address, you confirm it, and then you enter your profile information, which is your address, your credit card information, and it's stored securely, so you don't have to worry about that. And once that's done, and you go back to the main page, which is, by the way, newmancenter@ub.org, newmancenter@ub.org, you go back to that main page, you click Donate, and then you can enter in and enter whatever you want, whatever you can do on a weekly or monthly basis. And all of our ministries are up there, including, starting with, of course, the weekly contribution, the collection, which is what we're talking about in terms of our goal that we need to reach. We need to hit that additional number, and there's two ways we're going to do that. One is if some of us who are not doing anything now, maybe you had some reservations, and hopefully, we've addressed those reservations here today, then maybe now you can consider getting online and contributing in this way. And those of us who are already doing it, maybe we can do just a little bit more. And I know that everybody asks for money, and it's uncomfortable, but if we're all feeling the same way about the Newman Center, and I think we are, then this is a good thing we can all feel good about. So if you have any questions about that, we'll be here afterwards to answer them, but hopefully you'll consider, if you're not doing it now, to please join us. If you are doing it, please do a little bit more, if you can. And I'm going to turn it back to Mike about volunteer opportunities now. Thanks, Mike.
So in your handout there, you have something that looks like this, a list, has a list on the other side of the giving. All right, I wonder if that was part of the strategy. But you'll see a list of, these are opportunities to get more involved in the Newman Center. And I know a lot of people are already spending their time here, which is great, fantastic. But I've also talked to a lot of people that want to know how to get more involved, and they don't know who to contact, and sometimes they'll ask me, and I don't know who the exact person is. So I usually point them to Josh, but it's just the reality. So what I want to do was put a few things up. We want to bring a few things here together. I'll just hit a few of them. We do, you know, we have like technology support. That means putting the monitors and doing the clicking and so forth. Some of it's very light; some of it's a little bit more technical, which is great. If you have anything there, Josh is the guy. You know, we have sacristans, you know, that set up the altar. We have Mary for that. Lecture schedule, Molly Hopkins. You know, just go down. Bookkeeping, we need help bookkeeping. Welcome and hospitality, Judy's been doing a fantastic job. Yay, Judy. You know, in terms of welcoming and hospitality, but she's here at the 9:30 mass and also at 9:15 mass and also at 10:30, but we need more people to greet and so forth, which is great. Uc district ministers, of course, Cheryl Kessel's doing work there. See Cheryl, she's actually right there. Cheryl's there, in terms of there. Kids and family, Katie Coleson, which I think everybody knows, right, in the whole place, knows Katie. She, I was really happy to know that the number she just told me was, we now have 200 people in faith formation. It says 188 in there, right, but Katie, it's 200 now, with 200 people in faith formation. So, and she has kids and family groups going. It's really fun to be involved in. We need more teachers. We need more teachers, but also we have mommy and me class, mommy and me get-togethers and so forth, which are fun to go through. We have a lot of goods. Joanne's, both Joanne and Joanne do a lot of goods on Sunday night, and we're very happy with the work that they do in terms of providing that, but we're getting more and more people, and we could use some help with that. We have Liturgy Planning Council. Let's just skip down, skip down. The homeless ministry, Eileen for Homeless Ministry is doing more of that. That's the fourth Monday of every month? The last Monday, the last Monday of every month. And she, we prepare the food right in there, and then we go downtown and give it out. And Eileen runs that. If you want to join that, just talk to Eileen there for the homeless ministry. We have Food for Thought that Fran and Fran's involved in, along with my wife, Mary in the back, and along with about 12 other people, 14 other people. I see Sue's here. I see some other people that are here too for Food for Thought program. That's where giving out bags for students that are food insecure. You wouldn't think there would be. There's a lot that are, and we give out 75 bags a month right now. So, or something, other special skill. If you want, find them, email them, or you can also put, fill out this form at the very bottom, put your name, say you're willing to do it, and give the form to Josh, give it to any of us. All right? Okay, now we're going to do questions. Right, we're going to now move over to, oh, Katie? Yeah, Katie's ready for questions. So, no, we're going to do question and answer. So if anybody has any questions, we have, Katie has the microphone. I'll walk around with the microphone. Any questions? We are ready. Hold on. Wait. Wait, that's all right, but we want to get it on the...
How many families are registered at the Newman Center, first of all? And then cascading, how many families actually attend? I don't think we know how many families actually attend mass because we don't do envelopes. So that's one way to find out that. When you ask for $6 more for 300 families, how many families are here registered? Because I don't think 300 families show up every week to get six more dollars out of, okay? Secondly, my second question, Paulette, would be, in February, we were $70,000 underwater. In August, we were $57,000 underwater, and every week, we're about $2,000 in collection underwater. How did we get to zero? And then, once again, you're preaching to the choir here, and we all give, you know, the same, you can't keep going to the same well over and over and over again. You have to get the other families involved.
That's a great point, a very true point. Let me answer your questions in order. First of all, there's 1,400 registered people. I believe you told us it was people.
Okay, I believe it was families.
Okay, families in the parish. About a third of those families contribute regularly. That's very consistent across all parishes. How many people come to mass on the weekend? I...
Josh knows.
550 to 600 people. People. So, right, so that's probably, again, closer to 300 families, 200 or 300 families, depending on the size.
Or more.
Yeah, it depends.
Right.
Yeah, we get a certain, Mike, how many people are usually watching online or view online?
Well, about 40 to 50. About 40 to 50 watch live, but if you count the people that watch during the week, it's about 200. Now, that's not people, that's screens. That means, you know, there might be two people, or, you know, maybe a whole houseful, probably not a houseful, but there might be more than one person. So I feel comfortable seeing a couple hundred people watch our weekly mass sometime throughout the week.
So about 550, 600 come, and then we get another 200 or so that come, that watch during the week.
And I can point out that some of the people who contributed to close the gap over the course of the summer were people who live in Colorado or Philadelphia and watch us online, either because their siblings go here or because they used to belong here, and they send in substantial donations.
That's great. What's it, it's all...
I don't believe it is insurmountable. We are not yet underwater. Yes, we're not generating the... Yes, we're not generating the contributions, the weekly contributions, that we had planned. This time of year, our expenses are under control. I mean, it's, we've got a 12-month period. We're not, we're not building up yet a deficit. Okay? And I believe that the way we've managed this, and the way we're managing the budget, you know, you hold off on filling an opening until the collections get to the point where you can afford that additional body. We're trying to manage this in a way that we will not build a deficit. We can't build a deficit, because there is no diocese sitting behind us to cover the deficit.
You mean, diocese and wide, you're saying? Because right, for us, we're not accruing a deficit, right now. Or, but I see your point, is that, but it's right now that it's been the choice? I think from a diocese standpoint, to not sell this building. Katie.
Yeah, just a quick question. Do we have anything up on the website, or when they go to the page to play the Mass every weekend, asking for support there?
Asking if there's an opportunity to donate? Yeah, yes, on the website does have. Some of these screenshots actually came from the website.
So Nellie, there's two ways for the masses that we're live streaming and recording. During the Mass itself, there's a little ticker at the bottom, there's a Chyron that asks for donations. And then also for anyone who's subscribed to our newsletter, or the Bulletin now, at the bottom of that email, there is also an Ask for Donations. So we can't really segregate out who's donating because of the link on the email, but yeah, we do have, through the Bulletin, and then also through the livestreamed and recorded masses, Ask for Donations.
I was hoping I could ask, Paulette, how do you answer the question when people come up and say, "I don't want to give more money, because it's just going to go to bankruptcy"?
Easy questions. I am believing what we've been told in terms of the viability of this diocese. We went to a meeting, several of us went to a meeting with the CFO in August. We talked about our deficit, we talked about what we needed to do between August and the end of the year, and what our plans were for operating from September going forward. And we got a very positive response from the CFO. He's fairly new, he's very pragmatic, he's very reasonable. And he not only assured us that we were doing such a good job working on the deficit, that however we end the year, we would be fine. So that's one part. The second part is, you provide a very important ministry to the diocese, campus ministry. How can they, the diocese, minister to the future of the church, the students who are the future of the church, without a vehicle to do it? And St. Joseph's, and the Newman Center at Buff State, and this Newman Center are the three places that do that. Father Dan, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Sure. So I've done quite a few town halls at this point, but typically with a parish, and when you're talking about a parish, it's a little different than the setup that we have here. People are worried about their assessment, because all of their contributions get assessed. We talked here that that doesn't happen here. So when you, when you support, either by putting a check in the basket, or whether you support online, that assessment doesn't go to the diocese. The other concern that a lot of those folks had was about reserves. You know, if you've got a big savings account somewhere, maybe the diocese is going to go for that. And that's not really a concern for us here either, at this point. All right? I'm looking forward to building that up a little bit, with your help, but that's not really a big concern either. So I think the biggest risk that we faced here was, you know, if they came for the building. And as far as we can tell right now, they're not doing that. So we have an opportunity to really help with our contributions, the mission that's happening right here. I think there's much less risk here than some of the other parishes that I've worked with in the past.
I, for the first time, actually understand the difference between parish and what we are. Very helpful. I came to get information, and thank you very much, you've definitely clarified that. But those of us who are sitting here, a lot of us, active members and contributing members, and those online, are more on board with making things happen. It's the people that aren't contributing that don't understand this underlying difference. And if there's a way, either on our webpage, or by individual mail, to these many families that are not contributing, to make them aware that this is a little different situation, you might open some doors for better contribution.
Thank you.
Hi, I had two questions. One, do you know the, I'm sure you do, the average donation, weekly donation, either by person, or individuals, or by family? Or maybe you don't know.
I don't know, off the top of my head.
We don't do, we don't do individual. We don't do envelopes. So because we don't do envelopes, we don't know what the average contribution for people that are here, but from, but for online giving, that would be a separate piece of information.
The reason I ask is if you had, if people knew what the average was, let's say, look at it, wow, maybe it's $20 a week, maybe it's 50, 100, and you're giving maybe 10. Well, I'm not holding up my end.
Sure.
So it gets, you got a measuring stick. That's what I was asking for. The other question I have on this building.
Can I, can I answer that question? Because I do know, at a high level, the problem is people give weekly, monthly, quarterly. But if we are bringing in 9,000 a week, and we have 300 families, that's about $30 a family.
Well, and just 300 are giving, that's it? And you say you have 1,200?
1,400 families that are registered.
Talking to the wrong people.
And that is very typical for a Catholic community.
Well, when you say we're talking to the wrong people, yeah, but we've tried to talk to everyone.
Yeah.
You know, we've tried to get everyone to come.
In this building, the diocesan owns it, obviously, and they, and I'm sure they have what they feel of value is if they had to sell this property. Do you know what that is?
It was, I think, like 2.9 million. It was in the original.
It's 1.75 million. It was what they assessed, it was assessed at 1.75 million.
Yeah, that's what it assessed what they could get.
I don't know what it's worth.
It was an appraisal, not an assessment.
I'm sorry, appraisal.
The other thing is, the maintenance of this building and property is on us. Is that correct?
Yes.
Then it would mean to me that you should be building reserves somewhere here, if this budget's just a, you know, week to week, or month to month, year to year. If a roof has to replace, it's going to be very expensive. So if you don't build reserves, you're going to be in real trouble.
Yeah, we would like to build reserves.
Yes. But first, we want to get to a point where we can comfortably say we can continue our ministries, and that is the next step. But I think it's important for people to feel comfortable that in fact, we're fulfilling our end of the bargain, that the money is coming in and is being spent on Newman activities. That's our strategy. It's not that we haven't talked about it. We know we should have six months.
I think you've done a great job. The other thing is, you know, I see fundraising there was 55,000, a lot of that probably was the 52,000 that you mentioned for the chicken and the barbecue. Is there any thought, maybe to, you have two fundraising functions now, adding a third that could make some sense?
Well, the sponsorship of the Wednesday night dinners, we think, is an opportunity. And that doesn't mean that, you know, one family has to generate $2,000. Do you have five friends that go here? Everybody chip in? But we're hoping that sponsorship of the Wednesday night dinners could become a regular thing for some people, and that money goes directly to feeding the kids and taking care of one of our most important ministries. But there are, we're always thinking of, what other ways can we do?
Is this going to be expressed at the weekly Mass as part of this, not all of this, I know, but at the financial end?
That's actually a question that we said we would talk about after we had this meeting, which was to find out what the concerns and interests were, and how we could encapsulate that into something short enough to be at a Sunday Mass. Annual financial update kind of report, yeah.
Bill Pitner, Men's Club, 34 years attending the Newman Center. Two points, or two questions. One step, could you mention some steps that have been taken to reduce expenditures here? Something that you've done to stop spending so money? I've heard of quite a few of them. And I guess my second point's very simple. To me, probably the easiest way to increase donations is to increase participation. And I feel that the Newman Center would be in a very, very strong position to go out into the community and find some of these, quote, Roman Catholics. I know there's a lot of people in my family that have just said, "I'm not changing parishes again, I'm not going with it." Well, you know what? There are ways that we should be getting the word out, is to, "The Newman Center is here, we're open for business." Yes, we're a little different, maybe we're a little more progressive than we should be, but you know, there are ways to get to these, there are ways to get to these people. A Catholic radio, why can't we advertise out in the community? You know what? I've taken up reading the Amherst Bee, and there's other parishes advertising in their events, which is wonderful, but why can't we put our, hey, let's spend a little bit of that money and put our Mass times in the Amherst Bee? There's people out there looking for something a little bit different, because they feel they've been slapped in the face. And you know what? Maybe this is for them. How many people have just said, "I'm not changing church"? I know in my family alone, they don't want to go, but let's, we can certainly get the word out, we can get it out into the community, and we're not expanding in that direction.
I'll answer the first question, and I'll let someone else answer the second. So our maintenance team here has been terrific about finding ways to review our contracts, reduce our contracts. I know Josh and things with our cable and the office supplies, the.
Copiers.
The what?
The IT, the copiers, everything.
The copiers. So we're constant, the maintenance team and the office team are constantly looking at There's not a lot of surplus on the zone. You know, if you, if you look at what a, what any activity here occurs, we have a, we have a list that we put together for the budget of all the different ministry activities and what they cost. And you look on the right-hand column, and it's donated, donated, funded by tuition, donated. So I think, I think we're doing, you are doing a good job in helping out in many ways. There's going to be more things to do. We're very lucky to have the business office at St. Joe's, who's going to be able to sit and take, go through all of our contracts with a fine-tooth comb, renegotiate as possible. So that's the first question. But maintenance team, Josh's team, the office team have done a great job in finding ways to cut expenses.
I just want to add, and I think it goes a little bit to the question you were asking, that we do have vacant positions in our budget, and so we have been holding that vacant position open, because our collections are not at the level that we need them to be. So that's part of how we're balancing, you know, as we continue to try to drive the offertory and donations higher. So salaries is the biggest part of our budget, and as much as we'd love to have another campus minister, we really have to, you know, be prudent about it.
Just to respond to the idea of an advertising campaign, we've talked about that, but unfortunately, we're not there yet, in terms of a budget, to be able to do any kind of promotional thing like that. We just, we, right now, we have to just meet the expenses we have. But the one thing we can do is reach out to those people who are coming as visitors already, who are hearing our message, maybe some of them are here tonight, I don't know. But the folks that we're already touching in some way, whether it's through baptisms, or marriage, or, you know, the various things we do to reach out to the community here, as well as visitors at Mass, I would think that's, I guess you can call it the fertile ground for us, in terms of other people who are already benefiting and seeing what, benefiting from the ministries we do, but also seeing what we're all about, and maybe they feel this is a fit for them. Those are the, if you have friends and relatives who fit that category, invite them here, bring them to Mass, and encourage them to start contributing in some way. And that's really the way we're going to turn this in the right direction, I think. And I think we're already doing that.
Yeah, I think there's a, there's a number of avenues that we have. We, as you know, we probably do more baptisms than anybody in the diocese here. And if you think about it, it's a, if we could, we're trying to find ways to capture those individuals' families, to bring them in on a regular basis. And we get a few, but not very many. And we're trying, that's a great opportunity to get more. Katie's Faith Formation, 200 people in faith formation, that's another great opportunity to capture people. I think that that's, so we've got this entry that we're working on, trying to figure out how do we convert these people into regular members coming in here? Katie, I don't know if you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I was just going to say, we got an increase because of people like you that have told their kids, grandkids, a lot by word of mouth this year. So I just wanted to thank everyone here that told people about our program. I think that's where the increase came from.
Yeah, so I mean, there's a lot of opportunity. We just have to, we're trying very hard to navigate the budget, as well as, and a lot of these programs don't cost any money, but we're just like converting people from baptism. It doesn't cost any money, it's just time to try to work on the right path to get them in. But I think we have a, we have a great opportunity here, we just have to leverage it. Here. Oh, sorry, let's go first. You go, and then you're next.
I agree a lot with what Bill Pitner said, but I'll tell you what you're dealing with here. I've seen it over and over. People don't believe about bankruptcy, or they think that those things are not being told. And not only that, this is something else. I've sold raffle tickets for my parish, and I remember one time, when I sold, I approached someone at work, he said, "How do I know the pastor's not taking it all?" And I said, "Father Griffin let my car stay in the parking lot in the bad weather for free. He did not, he wouldn't take any money, because I tried to give him some money for taking care, making sure the car's taken care of." He sent it back to me. I trusted him, but there's a lack of trust, and before, until you address that, you're not going to get more money out of people, let me tell you. Now, that might seem cynical, but I've heard it over and over, and I've seen enough to know. You've got to work on the trust angle, too, to get any money out of people.
Well, hopefully, this is a step toward that. I mean, there is concerns about so many things in our diocese and in our community. I just want to say that Father Dan actually won the split club at the chicken barbecue, and he donated it back to Campus Ministry. So I don't think our pastor has his hands in the till.
Father Dan won the split club, Perry.
Yeah, right.
I just would like to say that I work with people probably in about 10 different parishes, and I'm sure everybody would have the same experience. People do not go to church, in many instances, because they can't understand the priest, the homilies are not based on Christian living, and they are fearful about how their money is being used. So we have all of those. We have ministers, priests who speak the gospel message, we have people who try to live the gospel message. We are challenged. We can understand all the priests, and maybe. If you're disillusioned, if you don't go to church because you don't want to get angry because you don't understand what's going on, maybe we could invite people to try the Newman Center. And Father Paul said, when he first came, "We are not radical. We are living the Christian message." And I think that's important. If we could get that across to people who are coming and invite people, I mean, people are going to parishes where they're totally disillusioned and they don't trust, and it would affect their gospel values. It would affect their willingness to give. And they want to celebrate. And you can't do any of those if those aren't existing. So maybe we can start among ourselves and emphasize that on, in the congregation. And it might help to increase the enrollment, increase the volunteer.
To that point of personal invitation, speaking from the perspective of working in Campus Ministry, that is how we've grown our ministry to students. We've had Wednesday night dinners where we had fewer than 100 students. We've had a Bible study for students where it was me and two students. And now Thursday nights, we have close to 20 students. Wednesday nights, we have close to 200 students for our dinners. So actually going up to someone and talking to them, I think that's going to be not just cost-effective, but also actually effective at bringing people here to the Newman Center. So Bill, I think what the Men's Club does in reaching out to men of goodwill, to good men, to try and bring them in, whether it's the Cover Girls Book Club who met here tonight, whether it's the volunteers who are here for Eileen's ministry to the homeless, to the Wednesday night dinners, whether it's Judy just saying hello to people with a smile on Sunday mornings, I at least look forward to seeing her, even when I don't want to be here at nine in the morning. So invitation, we know there are people around us in this community who lost a church a mile down the road, who had their church become a secondary worship site. We know there are people who are hurting because of what's happened in the diocese, because of a priest that they knew, because of experiences they've had with the church. So show them a different church. Show them our church. That's how we bring people in. Sister's entirely right. I've seen at work with Campus Ministry, we can use that same model to grow the Newman Center as well.
One of the last speakers was eloquent as far as why people don't go to church this week. And so many things she spoke about, our homilies are phenomenal, our warmth is phenomenal. And I'm going back to Roswell wants you to try Roswell once. What about a slinger that we can be responsible for communicating us? Try us one Sunday and talk about our, our mass schedule. Talk about what makes us special. Is it our homilies? Is it the Father Dan's? Is it the Father Jim's? Is it the Father? You know, I'm just thinking, is it something that we could do that, yes, I could talk to somebody, I can talk to my neighbors, but maybe I could just hand them something and stress our strengths. And as she spoke, I was thinking, I was going back to the Roswell thing. And we do want to give Roswell one chance. So maybe we could ask people to give the Newman Center one, one shot.
Yeah, we can, we can provide something like that, like a, a single page or some kind of handout that people can take and take, even a little card. People can take it with them, give it to their friends. We've talked a little bit about that. Those are simple things we can do and that's a good idea.
But let me add to that, that is something that the media has learned during this past election. Great idea, the slinger. Let's take it to the next step, which is social media. It's free. It's out there. Everybody that you know has got a Facebook page, they've got an Instagram page. It is all out there for the taking and it is free. Beyond that, there are things like podcasts and all this other new media that is for the taking. We have great minds in this community. We're attached to the university, one of the leading universities in terms of AI and every other intelligence you can think of. We can draw on that. We can draw on our members here. And we can do it. I mean, that's how you spread the word these days.
Yeah, Jackie, you're exactly right. In fact, we've talked about that. Mike, you may remember a conversation we had some time ago, not too long ago.
Sure.
Everybody here has Facebook. Everybody here has something online that they're doing. We can all leverage that. We need to kind of organize that a little bit and make sure we manage that properly. But you're exactly right. We can all talk up what's going on at the Newman Center and spread the word. And some people are more comfortable than others maybe doing that, but we all have that tool at our disposal. So you're exactly right. And I think that's something we need to maybe put a little bit of structure around, but we should do it.
And I think Bill Pissner is right. I think Josh is right. This is a time of great churning in the diocese. People are looking for exactly what we have here. So this is the time to reach out to them and spread a good word about what's happening here. One other thing I wanted to comment on was the fundraising idea. By the same token, we have a lot of great minds with the university and within this community that can help us, I think, raise money. You talked about the third fundraiser, Paulette, which is sponsoring a Wednesday night dinner. Great idea. Lot of folks in this community own businesses or whatever who maybe could chip in, put up a little sign for them, "This dinner sponsored by," you know, Wardinsky Meats, which I think they do anyway. But those kinds of things, you know, we have great resource in this community. People who own businesses, who have the knowledge, who can help us with that fundraising. Paulette, your whole career, just like mine, we've been involved in fundraising. There's always, you know, a new way to raise money or a new way to approach it. And I think we can cer, we have the minds in this community to do that.
To add one comment to what Jackie was saying, saying that the last election showed us the importance of something like, say, a podcast or social media is, to put it lightly. And so on that token, we have beyond just a Facebook page, we have an Instagram for our students. We also have a YouTube channel. Most of you are probably familiar with it because of watching the recordings of masses. But there is other content on that YouTube channel. And the way that YouTube works, the more people look at content and the more time they spend looking at content, the more that content will show up to other persons. So one of the ways in which you can help us get our name out by actually using the algorithm that YouTube itself uses to show people content, watch the other YouTube videos that we have. Share them on your Facebook pages. If you're still on X, I'd say if you're on Threads, or if your grandchildren are on Threads, Instagram. All of these social media platforms are places where we can share Newman content, whether it's a Facebook page post, whether it's something from YouTube. And by sharing that, we're driving involvement, which gets our name out there more. And then relatedly, if any of you have done work in, say, video editing or sound editing, please come talk to me. We would like to do something like a series of podcasts. We would like to, Mike and I have talked actually about this, about doing some theological short videos. So we have more stuff available for you as a community on our YouTube channel, but it's also difficult for a deacon and me to run a publishing, you know, studio. So if any of you have those skill sets or know people with those skill sets, that's something we can use. And that's something that can boost that all-important virtual presence for us.
Right next door.
You see why I married her, right? Volunteer Mike Biotto.
Something that's been discussed quite a bit, which I don't understand. And I'm going to quote Dude. When this building was built, we paid $3.4 million for it. At least that's what was raised to build, to build this building. And yet the diocese came in here about a year ago and assessed this place at $1.7 million. What gives?
It was just an appraisal. Frankly, I would be happy that it was appraised lower than what it's worth. It makes it less marketable, so I'm not complaining.
Is there a way that we can get ahold of all the parents of all these nominal Catholics on the campus? My, my, my son went to Northeastern University in Boston. And in some art class, he hacked his finger with an X-acto knife and went to the hospital to get it stitched up. That man is 45 years old and I just got another gift to, you know, this Brigham Hospital in Boston, because your son got two stitches, you know, like 30 years ago. So is there a way we can tap the parents? Because they have the money.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's difficult. It's, in fact, it's difficult to get lists of students, let alone their parents, from the university. That's all protected and they don't, we're considered still a third party and we can't get that information, unfortunately. It is protected. There are policies against it. Yeah. Nice thought, though.
This, this might be the same general thing. Oops. It's only water. It won't stain. Okay. You were talking about, like, St. Pius Church, they're closed. Is there any way, I mean, I know some people where I live, I live in a senior residence, and they said, "Well, we're going to go to St. Gregory's." Ah, anyways. So I said, "Well, you should come to our, you know, my parish." So is there any way that we could, it's just water. Is there any way that we could reach out to people that are in the parishes, that are around here, that are closing or merging? Do, can you get a list of people's? No, you can't. That's what I thought. You can't. So it's, it's only going to be word of mouth. What about visiting these people? Years ago, we...
The only thing you could do is buy a list of people that live around here or something like that.
Yeah.
And just you'd, you'd get X number of Catholics from that. You know, you know where they live pretty, pretty much.
Well, that was the other thing. I mean, I'm, I know, I'm not ready to be one of those people, but maybe younger people, maybe students or somebody. Years ago, they had that evangelization thing where people went together to meet people in their home and tell them about their parish and asking them, "Why are you not going to church?" You know, "Tell me a little bit about what you think." I don't know. I mean, that was years ago, so I don't know what, what they do now. But it was part of the people that did it.
Joanne? I just had, well, first of all, I want to thank all of you because of the tremendous, tremendous amount of work you've been doing on vacations, after midnight, eight days a week. And it reminded me of something Father Pat often said, that this is not the church, you are the church. And we, as a community, need, if we want to move forward, we are the church. And so we have a new leadership. It's fantastic, but that we would push forward. And then just kind of about the Brigham Women's idea, a friend of mine's daughter goes to a school down south and they, she goes to the dinners, and they have a QR code. And they say to the kids, "If anybody wants to donate anything towards your dinner tonight, scan and donate. It's not a big deal." Maybe they would donate, on an average, I guess she said, people donate like $5, what they would have paid for coffee that day. I don't know if that's a possibility, but it's something that I've been thinking of. I'm not sure what school, NC State or something, I can't remember. But that is something they do. So that's just an idea. But again, I want to thank all of you for the tremendous amount of work you've done for us, really.
Can I build on something you said, Joanne? About we are church? You know, church starts when the first two people come here. Lot of us understand where Dude is angry and where he came from and, and, we've all at moments in times been very angry at the decisions here. But we have a choice we can make. We can be this community and we can figure out how to go forward, or we can be angry. And it's up to every one of us in terms of...
You got me, Paul.
Okay. Thank you, Dude.
I just wanted to say that we're all talking about how to get people in here. My husband and I were standing in a bar one night and a parishioner from here said, "You should come to the Newman Center with us." And we said, "Yeah, that'd be great." She said, "No, pull out your phone, we're making a date." And we came with them that night, that day. And we have been here ever since. And we love this place. So do that. Make a date with somebody. I have a patient right now that her and her son are like, "Oh, we really aren't sure what we're going to do." And I said, "Come to the Newman Center." And I haven't made that date, but I'm going, next time I see her, I'm going to make that date and say, "Come with us."
I, I think we have a new recruiting source. It's bars, area bars. That's where we should start.
We, we should always remember the words that are written on the exit, above the exit door. You're now entering mission territory.
Thank you.
All right, any others? Okay, we have another one.
Thank you.
Last one.
I have been a Newmanite since 1966.
So you're a newbie.
I'm a newbie. I came here from our home in New York and went to school at UBE South, as it is now called. And Jim String was, was the priest in charge. This is directed at the gentleman who's upset because Father Pat's gone. I've gone through about eight priests, and I've gone through anger because each of them left, and then grew in love with them. And it, it happens. It's part of life. It's growth. I would like to thank the people who have been presenting tonight. This is the first time in all the years that I've been in Newman that you knew what the hell was going on. You know, it, it is amazing. It is amazing. So I started here, a freshman in college. So I started here, a freshman in college at 16 years old, and now I'm an old woman whose children have been baptized and have been confirmed through Newman, and now my grandchildren are interested in Newman, so I'm happy.
That's a great note, I think, to end our night tonight. I want to thank everyone who came here. We know there's a lot more people to reach, but part of reaching them is reaching all of you because we know so many things happen by word of mouth through our community. We will follow up to try to, first of all, have these at Masses this weekend and have some comments. I want to also say that our effort to try to recruit volunteers will go on. It's not going to be a week, but we're going to keep trying to drive opportunities to volunteer because it definitely engages people in our community. So I want to thank everyone. We know we have a lot of the supporters here tonight. We want to thank you for all you do for the community, and may God bless us and God bless the Newman community. Thank you.